Good evening, it's six fifteen and I'll call the October thirteenth Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order. And if you would rise, we need for the pledge allegiance.
I have a pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And it's your republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Secretary Slager, if you can have a local please, and we have Mr. Gilmore absent for a field event. When you.
Trustee Bowser, here. Trustee Patton, here. Trustee Lund, here. Treasurer Gilmore, excused. Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Schaffner, here. President Reed, here.
Thank you, and we've established a forum for tonight's meeting. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Vice President Schaffner, yes. Secretary Slager, yes. Trustee Lund, yes. Trustee Patton, yes. Trustee Bowser, yes. President Reed, yes. Motion carries. That brings us to gratitudes, and I would open up the tables, and I just want to start by saying it's very nice to be hosting this after our own very own soccer boys are playing in the streets.
I heard the red flag went well. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend because cross-country, Denver, and invitational in Portage on the same day, so that was a long trip, but it was beautiful, and so grateful for all the good reports currently.
I'm grateful to see all the activity on campus with red flag and then homecoming last week, and then now we've got parents on campus this week for parent-teacher conferences. It's just a busy, busy, busy time year, but a lot of engagement, a lot of activities, so it's positive thing.
Alrighty, moving on to high school representatives, they don't seem, they're busy too, so we might see them next meeting. Brings us to our consent items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Vice President Schaffner, yes. Secretary Slager, yes. Trustee Lund, yes. Trustee Patton, yes. Trustee Bowser, yes. President Reed, yes, motion carries. Brings us to our first discussion item for this evening, and we are beginning with district spotlights. And first up is Cedar Trails Elementary School, Mr. Scott Carpenter.
Good evening, everybody, how are you two doing tonight? Good, thank you. As Mr. Smith said, we are excited, it is a busy week for sure with all the parents on campus, and and we have parent-teacher conferences this week. Our year has started out fairly smoothly, I'd be remiss if I didn't, of course, mention with the passing of our beloved kindergarten teacher Sarah Kay. Super proud of our staff and our mental health team with the help of Devin as well, coming together and really supporting each other. I was very, very proud of how they rallied around that tragedy, but then welcomed students back within a day or two with smiles on their faces, and it was just really, really heartwarming to see that. And the students came back to campus with a new look, not quite as fancy as Beach, but Trails has the new flooring in each classroom, so that was a new look for our students, and it was, they were excited about it as well, and they walked into the classrooms, our teachers were super excited to come back to it as well this summer when they put their rooms back together, so thank you to Vic and his team as well for all of that hard work putting that together. I was a little apprehensive when I left for the summer with the work that had been completed, but everybody worked super hard to get that work completed on time, so thank you for that, so thank you to the board, and thank you to the community as well. So moving on from there, we had our sweeper team come through, so they work with our students to assess them where they're at with acadians and number screeners, and we are underway in those groups, so teachers took that data, they had some very, very good dialogue with that data grouping students for intervention, for tier-two interventions, and we currently have about two hundred and twenty-one students that are being serviced in tier-two interventions with our academic interventionists. Some of those are just math, some of those are just reading, and some of them are both, so our intervention blocks are set up so we can service both math and reading students. And that's on about a six, six to eight week cycle with progress monitoring, so those groups will be fluid as well. So once we get some more updated data, the teachers will make different grouping decisions based on that updated data. So we're currently serving around two hundred and twenty-one students in tier-two. Another thing that we are excited about at Trails is the EBLI, the evidence-based literacy instruction that is underway, our first grade teachers have been using that for a handful of weeks now. Being in classrooms, it's a faster pace than what we have had in the past with our core knowledge, our CKLA. The teachers are giving positive feedback around those lessons, the EBLI lessons. They're very hands-on, like I said, they're very fast-paced, so we're excited to see the impact of that, and our kindergarten team will be starting those EBLI lessons very, very soon with their scope and sequence. Another thing that we have is the playground update. Diane texted me this week that we have a shipping date, so we're looking forward to getting that new playground installed. The students are going to be super excited about that, we're all using one playground at the moment, so they're going to be working on this half, and then we'll kind of shift as we go, so maybe, maybe you have any updates on that, I'll give it Diane for some more concrete dates on when that will be shipped unless Mr. Smith has some.
I don't know.
I don't know either, okay. So again, thank you to the community for that, to the kids are going to be super excited. One addition that we had this year is Kim, we knew her as Kim Davis, but now she is Kim Buchek. So we added that counseling role to Trails, which has been very, very beneficial. She's been able to meet with students. We know that there are students with some trauma backgrounds, and she's been able to meet with them, she's, again, she's worked closely with Devin, she's worked closely with Dan Brandt, she's also coordinating some of our 504 plans for our parents, so she's been working with Mr. Brandt on those, and that has been a very, very positive addition to Trails, so we thank everyone for that. And then coming back, we have conferences tomorrow and Thursday. It sounded like we had some scheduling snafus at the middle school, that's a great problem to have. We are always looking for a hundred percent participation, and the staff knows that if a parent misses, they are to reach out, they definitely make that connection. So Tuesday, Thursday are Trails conferences, Beaches are tonight, as you driving in, you can see the, again, the parking lot is packed, which is just a wonderful sign, like Mr. Smith said, it's very exciting to have all the parents back on campuses, so we can update our parents' progress that those students are making. But that is our update, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
No questions.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for inviting us in today, appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, we have Cedar Springs Middle School, Courtney, down. Hello.
Hello.
Alright, so I put this together at the beginning of the year, first step, that's how I kicked off our building this year. And so I'm a visual person, I like visuals, so I wanted to speak this in, I thought it's not getting in sooner, and share some of the exciting things we're doing at the middle school. So our vision this year, we are really focusing on being student-centered, not just our kids socially and emotionally, but also getting to know how our kids learn best. So there's a book that we purchased, most of our staff members have, this presentation goes through it. It's called Yard Sticks, it's from Restorative Practices. If you've never seen it before, it's a pretty cool book, because you can just jump to the age that you're looking for, and under that age group, it will go into how do they best learn mathematically, how do they learn to think critically, how do they learn best to read, to write, and it really breaks down how their brain works, so it's more like a scientific approach, because who can argue with science, right? So we've been going through that, and we've been focusing on ages eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and we've just been taking some time to really figure out our kids that we have, this book's been around for twenty years, it's been revised four times, so even for the students that some of my teachers have had twenty years ago, this is applicable to all kids and their brain development, so we're also using some resources from the KID ISD, they have a really cool initiative called Michigan Student Voice. They bring together panels of kids, and they share with educators what it's like to be a middle schooler or a high schooler, which is always fascinating to hear their perspective. We have been doing our online PBIS points that kids love, so they think that they're shopping on Amazon, they get points, they have a little account, they go on the school store, they purchase their items. Oftentimes, it's like a sticker, you would think we gave them a hundred dollars, they clap for each other as they get up from the lunch table to get it. They cheer, it's adorable. I did have one kid last week ask if he could return something, and I was like, oh, you'll have to take that off with the PBIS store manager. He's like, who's that? I'm like, I don't know, it's happening, I have a meeting back, so our MySide students actually run the delivery of the store. It is such a cool thing to see during lunchtime, that's the three of them smiling right down there, and you can see the orders are on the table. The kids will often tell me, like, when are we getting more of the magnetic chasta, I'm saving up for that, so it's just such a cool program. We as a team look every month at who's getting points and who's not, and we're very intentional, if we have kids that aren't getting points, how do we give them points, how do we crank up that positivity to get them engaged in what we're doing? Because all of that really leads to learning, if they're feeling comfortable, safe, happy, then they're going to work hard for us, and they're going to be invested in what they're doing. We're also doing a HAWK time, which is comparable to the high school soar time, and then our elementary's win time. So that's where we're doing some intensive intervention, we're doing some academic coaching with kids, college and career planning, workforce planning, and then also social-emotional learning. On Fridays, we have worked in some assemblies where we're doing some team-building games. I know these are red solo cups, but I can assure you that the game was very appropriate. We had one side of the group, there was about five kids, they were supposed to flip them up, the other side, they were supposed to flip them down, and then whoever had the most on their side won. The teachers were not thrilled that I gave out popits as prizes for them to use in their classrooms, so I did wait till announce that till the end of the assembly, as I handed those off. And then during HAWK time, when we get more into later in the school year, so starting in quarter two, towards mid-November, students are going to be able to earn a HAWK pass on the days where we're doing intervention and academic coaching. There will be eligibility for that, just like there is with athletics, and so if they have a HAWK pass, then they have an opportunity for extension. One of the extension groups that I started is a student ambassadors club, so every Wednesday, during HAWK time, I invite a group of kids that signed up to be student ambassadors, and they just tell me what's going on in the building, how adults can support them better, what their experience and perspective is like. I always learn a lot when I sit down with them, and they just have some really cool ideas, and it's a chance for them to be heard and involved. So we're excited to do more things like that, once they are able to earn that HAWK pass. One of the things that we're also going to do is we are going to have a club where kids can go to our MySide classroom and tutor the MySide students. So we have some kids that are really excited to do that as well. But yeah, there is a link in there to this, if you want to go through and see the different ages. It's pretty interesting, I did use pictures of our students from last year, because these developmental things are about our kids. So this is just some of the work that we're doing, and I feel like it's very important, and I'm excited to get into the the academic goal setting, which is our next step, now that we've built that foundation of relationships and safety, so, yeah. Any questions for me about what's going on at the middle school?
How is your winning time or your halftime in your sky bowl, what does that look like?
So it is the end of first hour, it's thirty minutes at the end of first hour, so our classes are about fifty-four minutes long, and that HAWK time is about twenty-nine minutes long. And it's very structured, so they have, I don't know if you're familiar with Padlet, but they have a calendar, the students have it sent to them, and I put announcements on there, like today I put, hey, guess what, lunch and breakfast are still free, so please eat, and don't be cranky in the afternoon, so they saw that, because sometimes they wonder, they don't know if it's free or not, they don't want to ask, so that was an announcement I was able to put on there, but yeah, all of those things are, they go to their day, the teacher guides them through it. Yeah, they're really enjoying it so far.
I just had a comment about the PBIS store, I mean, I heard about that for probably ten minutes straight today, and there's a couple kiddos planning a cookie party, so this is a heads up.
Okay, good.
There's a few of them using a lot of their points, there's two cookies in a pack, but then they're sharing.
All of those for the two.
A cookie party, or.
Okay, that's a lot of pressure when the cookies sell out, I'll say a fact. I feel like we need to stock more cookies, or we're going to crush someone's dreams. Yeah, they're very into the store, it's really cool to see, and even in classrooms, I'll go sit down at tables and just hang out with the kids, and I'll give points to kids that are working hard, and they feel very important when that happens, so some teachers have it as an app on their phone, and even in the hallway, if the kid's like holding open the door, they'll go, oh my gosh, that's wonderful, what's your name, and they'll award them a point right on there, so our students are loving it, it's hard to find things to motivate that age group, so this is a good one.
Great ideas, like all of them, it's so cool.
We're having fun. Any more questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, guys.
Alright, we're welcoming the state student services team, and for special education, we have Mr. Dan Brandt presenting.
Hello, hello, Devon's going to go first, so.
Okay. Let's do well-being and some courses with Devon Rat.
First I just want to say thank you for having me, just to give a few updates on what we're not so far, and then what my role will entail. As you can see, there's a few different areas that I'll be focusing on comparatively to your, you know, two kind of roles versus one, in student services, director, social-emotional behavior, mental health, and health and safety, and then support systems. I was really excited that I'm following up Courtney and Scott, because they really talked and spoke to a lot of what I wanted you to hear about in regards to what multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, comprehensive framework might have within it, within a district and building level. And so, you know, MTSS is that comprehensive framework that includes academic, social-emotional, and behavioral supports and strategies throughout it, and throughout a tiered delivery system. So I heard Scott, I think, say tier-two academics, that's a portion of that, and then I heard PBIS, or positive behavioral intervention supports, and the reward system, that's also a portion of our tier-one supports for students. So it was kind of exciting to have them go over some of those things within our comprehensive framework. MTSS has five clear components, and that's team-based leadership, all the way from district to building level, and then even within teacher teams and departments, that three-tiered delivery system, comprehensive screening and assessment system, which that's where we get those benchmark assessments, to know what students might need the actual level of support, when Scott spoke to the academic need. Selection implementation of instruction, interventions, and support, so those would be those evidence-based practices, evidence-based programs and curriculums that we use within our tier-one, or all students have access to. And then continuous data-based decision-making, so when we know better, we do better, so making sure that we're connecting with data to make decisions, all the way from a district level, building level, to individual students. Just to give you an idea, I know I already spoke to this a little bit, but those three tiers of support, tier-one being embracing all students, so specialized, by all course, all students that are within our building systems, they get core quality instruction, classroom management, social-emotional learning curriculum, in connection with our PBIS school-wide systems. That tier-two would be that targeted group that we assess for those benchmark assessments and needs. So when you heard Scott talk about tier-two academics, she was speaking to a small group of students that need just a little bit more than what maybe every other student might need to get math or reading support and behavior as well, so that's where our counselors come in, and our support staff come in to help support with behavior and social-emotional. And then tier-three is, would be more intensified need, sometimes that's more on an individual basis. You might hear about functional behavior assessments, or positive behavior support plans for an individual student in an academic, and sometimes that's just intensifying the instruction that they're receiving even throughout that math and reading continuum need. Throughout MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support, we do have other special populations of students that need to be supported, because they may have some barriers. And the federal Every Student Succeed Act, has three identified student populations that we focus on, and that is the English language learners, students in foster care, and the students that are qualified under our homeless services for McKinney-Vento Act. And those, again, the reason why it's important to talk about MTSS is because most of the service and support we provide, we want to embrace within the systems that we already have, so that our students get access to that and reduce their barriers. Just wanted to speak a little bit to each individual, one of the things that the state does say is we have to have a coordinator for each individual special population. So for the district, I'm the coordinator for foster care, McKinney-Vento, and English language learners. Right now, currently, in our students in foster care, we have thirteen students. And the primary need for, or guidance and compliance around our students in foster care is that they have the right to stay within their school of origin, so if they were a Cedar Springs Public School student, we would work with the Child Welfare Agency to determine whether they can stay. Clearly, sometimes if they move far away, you know, long transportation, we would talk about what's best for them, but the whole goal is to make sure that their barriers for continuing their education are reduced. With McKinney-Vento, or our students, our homeless program, currently we have twelve, that is an ever-growing, growing typical population. There's not one time or one point of access, that's something that our department works on, on a daily basis many times. So the McKinney-Vento program in particular uses the federal definition of homeless, which it defines a student that has a, is lacking a fixed, regular, or adequate lifetime residence, which that clearly can be very individualized, and so a lot of the times, I'm using my other resources and making sure that I'm even consulting with KID ISD in regards to whether a student situation or family situation would be eligible under McKinney-Vento. Once found eligible, though, they also have educational rights, and that includes, you know, having transportation, making sure that they stayed enrolled in the district that they were attending when the homeless situation occurred, and then also making sure that we're connecting with any other supports or services, so if there's any other community agencies that we refer to, ensuring that they have educational supplies, school supplies, it's really about reducing barriers for our students. And then that last special population is our English language learners program, right now we have thirty-three students, and I took a peek today. For a majority of our students, they are Spanish-speaking, but we do have three or four other languages mixed in there, so it's, I think a lot of times we think, oh, it's our Spanish-speaking population, but we actually have some other languages that we're supporting within the building levels, so English language learners are identified through typically an initial enrollment, where we have a WIDA screener, and then annually, they have a state test called the WIDA access, and that allows us to understand their proficiency level, and then determine what intervention and strategy dosage, and what level they need. Any, any questions about special populations or MTSS?
I've got a quick question, just to clarify, do any of these overlap as far as foster care, homeless, ELLs, as far as the numbers?
The numbers.
Yeah.
They absolutely could overlap, an English language learner, and actually, I think there is one potential, I don't think they're enrolled yet, that is in foster care, that also maybe English is their second language, so absolutely they can overlap. It's the guidance and the compliance pieces are all separate, but that's the value of having a comprehensive, you know, support system, because we can just embrace them within those three tiers, regardless of whether it overlaps or is a single identifier. Yeah.
So now we're on to me. So I feel like I'm old news now, you guys have seen me and heard me a few times, so you have this presentation available to you in your email right now, I own the fact that Scott did not receive this early enough to get to your board packet, but you at least have it somewhere. So you asked a really good question about overlap, all of this overlaps in some way, shape, and form, right? When you think about tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three, tier-one is really all students, all instruction, that includes all of these special populations, including special education students with disabilities. So when you think about the idea of McKinney-Vento as an example, a student can all of a sudden become homeless, and that student may also receive ELL services, or also receive special education services, and also need other support, so they really overlap all the time. Sometimes in ways that we don't realize until we're faced with that dilemma, and we go, oh, no, we didn't think about that, right? And that's why it's important for all of us to be in communication with one another, and I think that first slide for us, after like the title slide, where it has Devin's number and my number, I will say this often, and say it because I mean it, there is no wrong door at student services, so if you call our student services number, we will ensure that you get to whoever it is you need, whether it's in our office or outside of our office, so we'll do that with a smiley face, go ahead.
So if I'm a tier-two student, how do I get identified, and how does that go? Like, everyone's not going to call Dan, right, but what does that look like?
Some might call Dan Brandt, Dan Brandt's going to refer them back to their building, right? So the way that the systems work, and I'll tape this one if you don't mind, the way that the systems are intended to work is that we collect ongoing progress monitoring data, right? And each building kind of sets their own process and sets their own data collection cycle, as it relates to what is tier-one delivering to you, how are we collecting data on assessment information? And then when we review that assessment data, we start to identify who are the students within their classroom that might need something different, and then who are those students that meet our building-level system descriptors, right? As it relates to moving into tier-two intervention, so it's really based on classroom and building data, and then how we're looking at progress monitoring data along with the kids that did, so we ask questions in our PLCs, right? Four main questions, what do we want kids to learn, what do we do if they learn it, what do we do if they don't? That question about what do we do if they don't learn it, really should lean into our identification model for tier-one, tier-two, tier-three intervention. Go ahead.
So what's the difference between finding a child who's special education, and these IMP in tier-two?
So if, so we can actually have students with disabilities throughout all of the tiers, right? And so how we might identify one student over another who might require special ed, I'm going to get to what are the requirements for special ed in a minute, but I think to that question, generally speaking, we would have a student participate in tier-one interventions inside the classroom, tier-two interventions. Tier two intervention based on a progress monitor in our building level model. And then look at our how are they responding to that intervention? Generally, intervention should be provided to a student for six to eight weeks. We call that an intervention cycle. Because once that intervention cycle happens, we collect progress monitoring. If the student responds effectively to that intervention cycle, then there might not be a need for them to be referred to special ed. Any other? Okay. Any other questions? Just pause me. You know my passion, so I will try to answer them as quickly and effectively as possible. So um under special ed's umbrella, there's lots of laws and regulations that we as a district are required to follow. Um my job is to support our buildings, our administrators, our teachers, all of them, whether they're special ed or general education. And all of the other players around there, including parents. As it relates to these major laws. How kids are find found eligible for special education are specifically down in that Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Ed. Those thirteen areas of eligibility and each one of those thirteen areas of eligibility comes with a set of assurance statements. Um their assurance, that means that if we're wobbling, we don't know. Then that's not an assurance, right? So it might mean we have to collect additional data and might we mean we have to look at something different for that student. But if we can't check the box on the the uh criteria for those uh thirteen eligibility areas. Then the student can't be found eligible based on Michigan law. All these laws go into play with one another. Some of them interact um and some of them are confused. Um and some people ask like with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Um what means that a student might be eligible under IDEA versus section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act, right? And what's the difference? So I'll get into a little bit of that. One thing that's I think important for um. Us to understand is as it relates to the Michigan State Performance Plan and Annual Performance Report. There is there are things that we have to be compliant with and then things that the state expects expects us to have results in. And that specifically happens through that performance report. Part of my job is to assist the district in identifying what are those factors, what are those contributing factors if we. Um are found to be within the the meets the requirement and. And or found that we don't meet the requirement in any one of those twenty-two um indicators. And so I support with that. And then just legislative updates. As much as special ed, we'd love for things to stay the same. All right, they don't stay the same and the laws and regulations and um. In our case, Sixth Circuit, the Sixth Circuit Court. Um helps us understand better. We get letters to colleagues from the Office of Civil Rights regularly. That helps us better understand what our requirements are and how those requirements have to be um interpreted. So it's an ongoing battle of making sure that we're up to the most recent guidance. Um and so I support all of our um. All of our district staff as a release of those things. Next, let's talk about IEPs versus five oh fours. So this is a a just a really quick. Um it's not a a real comprehensive of slide, but it should give you the concepts of what is the difference. Um really, the easiest way for me to explain the difference is those two speakers or speak speak bubbles up there. Is really IEPs are meant for students who require specially designed instruction from a service provider. That can either be a therapist of some way, speech, a language pathologist, physical therapist. Um special education teacher. If the student is found eligible to have a disability. But they don't require specialized instruction. They simply require accommodations to the environment to access the environment. That's a five oh four plan. That's a five oh section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act. So there's some more words in there that you are welcome to read in your leisure. But I can break it down into two simple things. Does the student require specialized instruction for a special education certified service provider? Or do they just need accommodations for equal access to the environment? Whoop, let's talk about services and programs. All right. Anything you see highlighted in yellow means that we collaborate with Kent Intermeast School District. Um anything that you see in green means we collaborate with either Kent Intermeast School District. Or we participate in regional programs with some of our other regional partners. Um specifically for the programs in green, if you read the program type. You will also read the districts that house those programs with us or for us. Okay? So as an example, um we do not um employ any physical therapists directly for um within our district. Those are hired through the ISD and then provided to us through um a process of F T E that allocation. Um so any services that do not have a highlighted um item behind it. Uh those are district provided services and we employ the staff that that do those. Um it's important to understand the why behind our collaborative services and our collaborative model with Kent ISD and our regional partners. Um special education is expensive, if I can say that. Um because as you get into the 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 world of special education, our populations become smaller, right? But our services don't go away, right? So when we start to think about some of those really super small populations, we call those low incident populations. Um such as visually students with visual impairment, students who are deaf and hard of hearing and require a. A program for learning American Sign Language as an example. Um those are really low incident. We might have one or two students in the district that require those programs. So if we had to provide alone. All of those programs for those small populations, we would exhaust our finances, right? So those partnerships become really important when, let's just say regions, we belong to region one, so that's Comstock Park, Kent City. Um and uh Rockford, Kennesaw Hills. So we pair up and say if we have small populations or a smaller incident population. We can come together and provide the best possible programming by sharing the cost of those programs. So in that sense, we uh Cedar Springs Public Schools specialized in my side programming and specialized in programs specific for ASD, right? Others are able to specialize in emotional impairment or moderate cognitive impairment. And then we partner with Kent ISD for. Students who are highly impacted by severe cognitive impairment or severe autism. Uh but that's how the partnerships work. And so if you have questions about that specifically, I I can answer those questions either tonight quickly or. At Moreland if you call my office. Okay. Here's just some special education data profile specifically for our district and then comparative specific to the state of Michigan. Um and Kent ISD. That top bar just tells you what percentage of our students are eligible in those categorical areas. So remember I talked about. The thirteen areas of eligibility. That's how our students in Cedar Springs Public Schools are broken down by their areas of disability. And then the um other counts down below is just a comparative. At an overview of special education of how many students in our district are identified and what percentage that is of our overall population. And then how that compares to the state and then how that compares to the Kent ISD overall. As you can see, we have a slight um a higher special education rate than Cedar Springs Public Schools. Um not by a lot, but it's it's to me, one or two percentage points says that we could do probably some more work investigating what the cause of that is. But for the most part, that's just a sliver of data. And that's my last slide. So questions about special education or overview or anything that Devon or I talked about? Yes, sir.
I have a question. What happens, what would you say to a parent if they want their kid evaluated for special education to get an IMP?
So it depends. Um so each stu- each kind of scenario is a little bit different. Generally speaking, I would um. Want the student to go through our SST process or student um teacher assistant team. Um because what that what that would tell us is maybe the parent in some way, shape or form. Hasn't it isn't aware or doesn't know what the other supports that are in tier one and tier two are. So what I would hope is that we exhaust those tier one, tier two before we go down the path of special education. Because if if we don't have to um identify a student as a student with a disability, then. Then that benefits that student, right? Um all students are gen ed first. And so we hope to exhaust that process. Parents can always request. Um when we receive that request. My office, quite frankly, with the building administrator and the building team determines what to do about that that request. I don't recommend us jumping over our identified processes because that's a waste of resources, right? If we are overwhelmed collecting information and data about students that might be able to. Have tier one, tier two interventions versus special ed, then our special ed team can really focus on the kids that actually are identifiable. Because if we go through an evaluation multiple times and we continue to find a student not eligible. That's wasting resources here that could be saved by them going through a process over here.
So how would the parent have to request that?
Um generally, they would request it front from the building. They would um contact their teacher, contact the the building off the office.
So or will the, or does it gotta be written?
Um it can be one of either one. There's no rule that says it has to be written.
Okay.
Again, like I said, I would hope that the the parent would be able to understand that we have other processes to support. So if we're not utilizing, because we only like, when I think about our staff. And the number of staff that we have that are specialized to do that work, I think about three schools psychologists, right? If they're already doing forty-five evaluations at any given time throughout the year. Five more evaluations that might not be necessary if we go through the already identified process. Will only burden them further and we all know that staff are working really hard already. So if we can lean into those systems that says, hey, let's follow this system, see where it goes. Um and then if that doesn't work. Part of the end of a tier two intervention system or tier three intervention system is if the student's not responding. There's a referral made for evaluation of special ed anyway.
So it's trigger, trigger if they don't.
If they don't make progress, through progress monitoring. Thank you. Yeah, and um. Any other questions? I think that's the the fastest and least I've said in a fifteen-minute period. All right, and if you guys have any any questions, you know our numbers, not that tough if you want.
I will say that it's uh very informative.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Anytime, anytime.
Appreciate it.
It's my passion. I eat it.
We didn't get it in the email. I just pulled it up. It's, yeah, and it's in.
And the links are live. So if you hit any one of those links. Particularly like um the Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Ed or the thirteen areas of eligibility, those links will take you to another area. That will give you more information about that. If you um I don't, if I can plug this, I know I'm talking more, right? Um I look at Scott, like someone has to be my my stop. Um if you get to something that what I try to let people know is my job is to eat and sleep this stuff every day. Um it's hard to garner all of the nuances by kind of like looking at a website, right? I I would encourage if you read something and have questions, please call my office and I can answer those questions. Um the internet, the worldwide web is a tunnel of nothing but darkness. That's the most positive outlook I can give you because often I find myself lost in the pit of information. So let me help you. All right?
Thank you.
And I I will upload Dan's presentation and um. And Devon's presentation into board books, so that way it's in one unique spot for everybody.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for the building and the district spotlight. Moving on to bond construction updates.
So um as uh Scott shared, uh we are still finalizing getting rolling on the work at the playground at Trails. That project missed the summer marks. Uh because if you recall, we approved the. Um uh playground design for beach and for view uh last January and February. And we didn't approve the playground design at Trails in January and February because we we. We we took advantage of an opportunity to rethink how that space is being utilized by students. And so. Because of that, it added about a three-month window to our. Proposal timeline, which then added a three-month. Extension to our ordering timeline, which pushed. The company into summer, which is their busy moment. So we just missed. That early uh early order window, so we couldn't get it installed during the. During the summer. But that that work is underway, uh and we're making progress. Uh as best we can while still having a vi- a vibrant experience for students. To experience when they're recess at Trails. Uh if you drove by beach today, you may have noticed uh that um. Less of the building is red than what it was before uh you drove by today. Uh they're in the process of uh adding the the stain to the red brick. Uh so the old red brick now will match the new uh gray brick. Um and so we're excited about that. The weather forecast looks very favorable. Uh for that work. And so um you know, it won't be a perfect match because brick is a unique. Very porous uh substance with different finishes. But you know, when you're driving by, you're not going to be able to differentiate necessarily. Between the new and the older, uh which is really uh the look that we're hoping for. Um the other project that we're still waiting on approval from uh the uh. Instruction group or the um uh board of um. Building um officials uh at the state uh for their for their final approval is the cold storage building. Um so. We've been bouncing back and forth with the building inspector on that project for quite some time. Um the the. Issue that came to the forefront, uh you know. After he had approved all of the electrical, the structural, everything was good to go. Um what we've been delayed on. Is um his interpretation of accessibility to the building. And so um you know, our goal is to be in compliance with building codes. Um as efficiently as we can be with money. Um his interpretation of the building code regarding accessibility uh was that we would have to um. Build a concrete walkway, a con- concrete path up to the building. Um the way the grade is from existing uh pathways up to that building is such that we couldn't just do it. A straight incline. We were gonna have to do some switchbacks. Total cost of that side block uh proposal as the building inspector was. Uh requesting or requiring was in the ballpark of of upwards of thirty-five thousand dollars, which would likely even a little bit more. Depending on how many switchbacks we actually had to build into that sidewalk. Uh Triangle first proposed a solution that they were successful in getting. Another building inspector to improve uh in some work that they did in state parks along the lake shore. Where they used a crush uh asphalt um packed material. And um for that inspector, they passed the Triangle projects. Um in other uh in other areas um without question. And so when Triangle proposed that solution, um the inspector um simply said, that's not my interpretation of the law. Uh or the the building code, you have to follow, uh you have to build a concrete pad. So um the the latest proposal that we are uh that we have uh. Put forth in front of the building inspector is to um utilize the concrete pad that is. Adjacent to or in the same vicinity. Um we poured a second concrete pad. Only poured the original concrete pad for um the the um. Cold storage building to be used for uh either a future uh location for a greenhouse or. Uh possibly the um FFA had asked for uh space to do composting. And so there's an extra uh concrete pad, six inches thick. That's that's currently uh doesn't have anything on it. So. Triangle's latest proposal was to um utilize the concrete pad, uh turn that into um accessible parking. Uh with striping and signage and then create a very simple uh sidewalk from the concrete pad over to the building. At a cost of, you know, three to five thousand dollars. So that's where we are right now. Uh we're simply waiting on the inspector to. Reply back to that proposal and it takes a long time. It's incredibly frustrating. Um but you know, but to it's I to me, I'm not being a good steward of district resources. If I, you know, approve a purchase of thirty-five thousand dollars, we would do it for significantly less. So that's where we are. Uh it takes an incredibly long time uh to get things through. We're not the only project. In the state and and this is a very small piece of a very uh a very large project, you know, have be done. Be going forward to build. Uh a pole barn outside of a normal construction process. Um. We would have had the city inspector come and inspect it and it would have been done and it would have been. You know, sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars and and it would be functional. Um because we're utilizing, uh we're we're within a bond window and we have all of this other, all of these other projects going on. Um the state inspectors are involved and it just is what it is. So the overall cost of the project, you know, has gone from a seventy-five thousand dollar building to. You know, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um but part of that is scope creep. There's this thing in construction called scope creep. So um. It throughout the project, you know, we. So, um, it, throughout the project, you know, we've heard things from, um, the FFA group and that, that, hey, it would be really cool if we had this. And so while we're, you know, while we're doing the work on campus, yep, we, we were gonna run power up the building anyway, but we ran a two-hundred amp service, uh, instead of a hundred and twenty amp service, because they saw utilization down the road. Well, that added cost to the project, it didn't influence the time. You know, they still, they still had to, uh, burrow the, the cable up, they buried the cable up, and they had to, they horizontal drilled that. Um, but then they also thought, ooh, it'd be really cool if we had fiber up here. And so that added a significant amount to the cost of the project, but we understood that there would be benefit to that as well, because if we have fiber up there, and we can do cameras, and we can do other features. So there have been several instances of scope creep that have added to the overall cost of the project, but also extended the deadline of that project. And so, um, you know, once we get the green light from the state building inspector, um, our hope is to, uh, you know, construct that flat cement walkway from the pad and the accessible parking places over to the building, and, uh, it'd be good to go. The rest of the building is ready, you know, we've got full approval, but we don't have occupancy, because it doesn't have an accessible parking space to it. Um, it's been very frustrating, it was. Um, of all the projects that we've done, all the projects that we've done, the work at the high school, um, the work at Red Hawk, the work at Beach, uh, this, the smallest scope of the project has been, uh, really created the most angst, uh, overall. It just because it doesn't make any sense, like I don't understand why this isn't enough. This is, it's too easy of a project, why isn't it that?
The other thing too, I mean, they had their opportunity to review those at the front, right? But it didn't come.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't understand those frustrations. I keep her impatient.
It's not like we're sitting around ignoring it, you know? So that's the, the, the cold storage building, the other, uh, piece of the work that we're currently doing is really sharpening the pencils and, um, ma- trying to maximize the, um, potential of the work, uh, next summer, uh, around, um, the re, uh, reconstruction of, of the roadways, um, and, uh, also some walking paths. And I'll have some further updated information that I'll be able to share, um, with you. We've got another meeting, we've got a walkthrough tomorrow with GMB, where we'll actually be walking campus. Uh, we did that a couple weeks ago with Triangle, uh, and then we've got another meeting on Thursday, where we'll, uh, really try to get some, uh, clarity around our planning, uh, because, you know, we wanna maximize the bid windows, and in order to do that, we've gotta have projects, uh, completed, uh, drawings completed, everything ready to roll, uh, so we can get these projects out for bid late December, uh, into January, so we can be awarding bids in February. That, that maximizes our, um, I guess maximizes our leverage, uh, it puts us in the most optimal position to get the most work done possible for the least amount of dollars possible. So, that's where we stay, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. So you talked about the pad that was poured for the greenhouse that you use for a parking? Where we have to turn on, pour it under slab for the greenhouse, did they add one?
Um, that depends on the interpretation of the, the inspector.
And then the second thing is Beach Elementary, the black mat that's on top of the roof on the, the part that we didn't tear down? Is that still the process of?
Yeah, we've got some trim that's coming, they don't, they don't know with that, yeah.
And then the other thing is, is I see in the weight room and the cheer room are still, when do you plan on having those up running?
Materials are scheduled to be in, uh, this week, or excuse me, by the twenty-fourth, uh, with installation, uh, coming as soon as they're, as soon as the materials are here. So, but that's gonna be dependent, you know, they've got a solution right now that's, uh, repairing the current gaps. But if that solution doesn't work, then they've got to tear the floor out. That won't be a cost to, to us, that's, you know, really on the shoulders of the, of the installers. Uh, so they'll, they'll have to eat that, but unfortunately, we're, we pay the price, because our, you know, wrestlers are inconvenienced, our, uh, our phys ed classes at the high school are inconvenienced. You know, there won't necessarily be a monetary cost to us, but there's definitely a, we're paying the price. So, yeah, all right, thank you, yeah, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very, very welcome.
Okay, moving forward, we have the twenty-five, twenty-six overnight field trip requests.
So there are four requests in board book, um, there's one request that we added, um, just this, this week is the first read. So we won't take, I won't be asking for action on that. But we've, um, had a, an opportunity to review the MASC, M A H S State Leadership Conference that the high school team has gone to for several years now. Uh, that's a overnight, uh, trip in Grand Rapids, uh, for our student council group, but also our honor society, uh, student leaders. And that's been a really positive experience for those, uh, students. It's on your table, uh, because while it's a local trip, um, the, uh, programming extends later in the evening and then fires right up first thing in the morning. So, and part of the experience for our students is having that opportunity to, uh, represent their school in a, in an overnight conference. And so, uh, that's why it's before you tonight for requests, um, or for approval. The athletic overnight field trip, uh, form is a collection of field trips. We don't know for sure if those will be utilized, uh, those would only be, uh, utilized in the event that our team would qualify for the specific tournaments, but those are, uh, uh, MHSAA, uh, trip-related. And then, uh, also included in the board book is the eighth-grade East Coast trip brochure, so the details for that trip. It's the same basic trip, uh, as what they've run in the past. You know, and there's adjustments to the cost of the trip, just because of, uh, inflationary measures in the economy. But for, you know, they'll be going to the same places, seeing the same things. Um, and then the last, uh, trip request that we're asking for, uh, action on this evening is, uh, the trip for a group of three of our current FFA students to go down to Indianapolis. Uh, it's a one-day trip, they're not staying overnight, but because it's out of state, that's why it's on, uh, on report action. Um, but they plan on going to the convention, uh, the expo for a bit in the morning. Uh, and then they plan on, uh, making a stop at Fairview Farms on the week back. I had the opportunity to go down, um, with the FFA group a couple of years ago, and I visited the Fairview Farms. It was amazing to see that, uh, operation in action. So it was a really, really cool, uh, really cool thing for our students to be able to see. So other than that, no new, if, no new information, uh, as far as field trips go. So three of the trip requests will be up for action tonight. The, um, conference in Grand, the leadership conference in Grand Rapids, the athletic trips, and then the FFA, uh, trip, uh, on the twenty-seventh, we'll be asking for, uh, action on the East Coast trip as well.
You're adjourned. Thank you. Moving forward to, we have a high school course proposal maybe change with Mr. Baron Ball presenting.
Well, we have an opportunity to, uh, have a triple win here tonight if, uh, the board were to pass this, uh, recommendation here, um, with little to no cost, or potentially even a savings, depending upon the year. AP Calculus came out with AP Pre-Calc in twenty-twenty-three. It was the first time that they actually introduced it into, um, schools across the world. And, uh, we have students who, two sections of fifty-five students who take pre-calc just this year, have been taking pre-calc over the years. And, uh, with this passage of us being able to switch over to being AP Pre-Calc will allow us, um, the opportunity for those students to be able to take the AP tests, um, and with a passing score. And, um, many majors, um, amongst all those colleges and universities their students attend, um, be able to waive the introductory mathematics requirement, uh, versus what you might see in like, uh, AP Calculus or AP Chemistry, which is more defined a smaller group of folks, um, for those classes. This is really very general and broad fact, um, that can be shared, uh, too. Uh, a little bit of study that Mr. Chris Painter in the mathematics department did on, um, the top seven schools that are, um, graduates are attending to our community colleges, so they're not listed there, but list out, uh, the courses and, and some of the data for that, uh, information I just shared, as far as how that will benefit our students. Uh, so that's one of the wins, the other win would be to parents and that, and the fact that not having to pay for that course or help assist their child, um, paying for that course, uh, at college. And then the third win would be for us as a district, and, and the fact that we have some students who dual enroll in these mathematics level courses, um, in their junior or senior year, um, at the cost of six hundred to eight hundred dollars per course, per student. Um, so even though with the subsidy that we, um, put forth from our enrichment bond and, um, general monies, there would be, uh, savings there if we have students that are, are given guidance that you can take the AP Pre-Calculus class, um, and not have to dual enroll in that course, okay? Uh, secondly, there is no additional, um, training necessarily required for this if we stick with our current certified staff member. But, um, we always wanna make sure that we, um, have flexibility in our staffing, so there is potential possibility of having some AP training done, or at least for our current staff person, um, as they get into this and, and reflect on some of their students' first grades, we're seeing might need a mini-course refresher, kind of problem-solving one. Um, but no new textbooks needed, no change in the curriculum. Um, any resources that are needed by the instructor can be found through AP Classroom, um, uh, resources. And so, um, really, like I started at the beginning, this is really a triple win, um, with little to no cost and potentially savings for us.
Do you think it will take time for any students to take them because of AP?
Uh, no, I don't think so, because, I mean, you don't have to take AP tests and you're done. So with the curriculum being the same, uh, whether it was called pre-calc or advanced placement pre-calc, there's, there's no change in the, the level of the rigor and all of that that's there. So it's still, uh, is with any cor- course, uh, AP course up to the student who wants to examine it.
See that again, it's not on branch screen, but we've, that will be just for a news. Moving on to the spring/summer, spring twenty-five, we will have some recommendations.
So it feels like we've been looking at this for four months. It's because we have been looking at this for four months, and actually, I've been looking at some of these proposed, uh, changes since last November. Um, it, we have a lot of, uh, items in this collection of proposals. Um, some of them were related to a change coming out of Washington. Um, prior to, uh, last fall, the grants, the dollars that were flowed through dollars from Washington to districts or the ISBs to states, uh, were operating under, uh, a collection of guidance statements, um, called the Uniform Grant Guidance Rules. So it was UGG, um, in the fall of twenty-twenty-four, before the, uh, presidential election, they, uh, transitioned, they moved out of, away from the UGG for our guidance, and they, uh, created a new set of guidelines called the Education Department in General Administrative Regulations, or EDGAR, E D G A R. There's nothing like a good, uh, acronym to go with, um, with education. The challenge came, uh, after the November election. Then there was talk about the Ed Department being dissolved, and there were questions about, oh, who will be overseeing the EDGAR rules if there's no Department of Ed? And so, um, we've been in kind of a holding pattern, um, until, uh, you know, towards the latter portion of the spring. Um, districts were encouraged to move forward with the recommendations, so we were, we would be in compliance with the current set of recommendations, the current language of the EDGAR rules. Because even though the Department of Education, uh, may be, may look different today than what it did a year ago, um, there's been no legislative action to change the guidelines that are in place currently. So that's why we've got a collection of, um, uh, there's one collection of policy language uh, that we normally would have been taking action on last spring, coupled with the policy language updates from last spring. So we're kind of looking at a group of, uh, two bundles, so that's why this group is an expert on. Um, so, uh, one thing that I did, uh, also acknowledge, uh, getting some feedback, um, uh, from the board table, this is a, a pretty complicated body of work. Um, and the content that comes through from Neola, um, can be a little bit difficult to, um, break down or compare between current and, um, and proposed. Um, in the Neola proposals, when they come through, uh, you know, and you get a, when you look at them on your screen, um, you'll see kind of a redlined version, so things that are, that are being recommended for deletion, they'll be, uh, they'll be highlighted in red with a cross through. Uh, any new language they're proposing are highlighted in green, that's new, um, a different language than what's in the current practice. Uh, but then there are also sections throughout the, uh, language that, um, is listed as optional. So, um, you know, optional language only comes into play, uh, if the box is indeed checked, uh, for that optional language. And so I got some questions about things that the box wasn't checked. Uh, and so it really doesn't apply to our, our body of work, um, as a board, uh, in general. So, um, there is some, in, there are some confusing elements to, uh, how Neola, you know, shares this content. Um, in reflecting with Heidi, uh, one of the wonders that we had was, you know, like, I could go back in, um, redraft what you see, so that, um, you know, even if it's a new proposal, but it's not a box that we've checked, I could go through and, and cross that out. So you only have to, you only have to worry about the green language that is not, that's not been crossed out yet. So if that makes things a little easier for you, I am a, I am a very visual tactile person. So I, I can't, I don't have a, I, uh, I don't have success going through and trying to look at current proposed changes on the screen, so I do make copies. If that's something that would help you in the future, we can absolutely do that for you as well. Um, so all that being said, uh, there are, uh, uh, the bulk of the proposals that are in board book tonight are the same as the proposals that you've been looking at for the past four months. Um, one thing that was changed, uh, at our last meeting in September, we did talk about, um, another revision to the suspension, um, expulsion language. And so that is, um, the, it's, uh, policy fifty-six-ten for the emergency removal, suspension and expulsion of disabled students. Um, and so I did modify that language, um, in that policy. That language is in green because it is some new language. And I did try to incorporate, uh, some language specifically from, uh, the revised school code around, um, suspension and expulsion, and, uh, included, um, the initial, um, uh, included a statement that would- Uh included a statement that would uh. Basically, green light, a building principal may suspend a student for up to five days. Uh a building principal may suspend a student for a period of up to ten days with the approval of the superintendent. So it just provides a little bit of oversight uh that feels like it's in line with some of the thinking that um. That you put uh forward on the table so far as moving up this language. Uh then the next piece um is that um superintendent may suspend a student for a period. Of longer than ten days, but not greater than forty five days. In consultation with Board President and two other officers of the board. Uh so I think that was aligned with uh some of the thinking that was coming out of our last uh discussion in September. Uh and then the um the again, the full board shall act. On any appeal of that super of the superintendent's decision. Um and then uh lastly, the superintendent may recommend to the board. A long term suspension, greater than forty five days, but not more than sixty days, or that the student be six expelled. So part of the language uh in the revised school code is that. They uh really put suspensions in three, three buckets. Um I up to ten days. Uh then that, and that's just a short term suspension, uh then they have a um. The window time between ten and sixty days, and they call that a modified expulsion. And then uh the window beyond sixty is is just expulsion. Um so I, you know, depending on the action of the board, the board, a board could vote to. Allow the superintendent to expel. Uh but that's not our, that's not our practice. Our practice has been uh historically that anything greater than that. Uh ten day, short term suspension. Is a decision uh that comes out of a board hearing. Uh so hopefully that kind of captures the thinking um from that body of work. And then also there was a recommendation from the board table uh in regard to policy. Uh one forty two dot three under the term of office.
Yeah, before, before I move on, just in that section that we were just talking about.
Yeah.
Um I know we, we worked through the content, but just um the formatting. Um that last sentence. And that's highlighted in green. At the beginning of that, it just says of the superintendent.
Well, there's an extra period in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, it should read um the full board shall act on an appeal to the decisions. That period should not be there, the decision of the superintendent.
If I'm getting super technical, I think there's an extra space. And and before the full board shall have done any appeals.
Oh yeah, correct. Okay. And there are questions on that one? Okay, and then the um an- another uh recommendation for revision came uh from board table. Um for policy zero one four two point three under term. The recommendation for consideration was that members of the board shall be elected by the school electors. For a term of four years comma with only three consecutive terms. So that's, that's new language that we've not seen before. Uh we will not be taking action, or that's not on recommendation for action uh this evening.
So do you have questions? Is there any process of for them? Like do you have any other school this hurts?
Nothing I'm aware, but I could research it.
Yeah, that was actually. That was a question someone had had asked me um and I kind of wasn't sure either. I mean, someone from the public had up here and could ask me that. I was, I was not sure about that either.
Jason.
I have a question about the twenty three forty.
Okay, hold on just for a minute, okay?
Um you've got to find out the board and and ask for just the superintendent. What's the reasoning behind moving to the board on that decision?
Uh on what page?
Uh very first page.
Um.
Very bottom.
So um twenty three forty is really a combined. Um it's a combination of two proposal, two proposed changes from Neola. So um eighty six forty is the last one in your bundle. Uh Neola is recommending that that policy just gets rescinded. We just eliminate that policy.
No, this was the field and other district sponsored trips.
I'm sorry?
For the field and other district.
No, I'm just sharing that it's, it's a combination of. They're, they're recommending that there, there are a lot, there's a lot of overlap between eighty six forty. And twenty three forty. So the recommendation from Neola is that they eliminate, we eliminate eighty six forty. And incorporate our current practice into one document rather than having it in two places. And the new proposal is twenty three forty. So if we go to the. Um so under the um overview and comments section, it's also included. Um it talks about um kind of gives you the why behind the change, so. Policy twenty three forty, um they're recommending this policy has been adopted to update language overall. And to include transportation op- option uh up options and provisions. That are currently found in eighty six forty. And then if you go to the uh back page and uh look up eighty six forty, they're saying. Uh this policy is recommended for deletion as the provisions for transportation have been included. In twenty three forty district and other sponsored trips. And so currently, the board does not approve. Um just the day to day field trips, the board approves out of state travel and overnight travel. If the board wants to approve all field trips, then we would uh check some of those other options. Um as appropriate. So that's when, you know, that's one of those things, Neola is just making uh recommendations. Then boards can uh take other options as they are presented. Or uh boards can uh draft their own options. We would just want to make sure that we ran them through legal uh so that they were. They really were appropriate or aligned properly with the law.
Yeah, I would not be in favor of approving other single field trip now, so. I'll leave that to you and your designated person.
And that work actually is done, uh Ron works with our secondary principals. To make sure that the field trip is uh aligned to curriculum standards. And an appropriate use of the school day. Uh Dan works with our elementary principals to make sure the same thing. And if we ever have questions, we, you know, come together and say, hey, what do you think about this? Yeah.
Another question on policy six one one zero, uh Edgar.
Okay.
It says the superintendent will present the following proposal to the board when required by law. Why do we put the language of when required by law? Shouldn't it be? All the time?
Um. Any share where that is on the?
On the first page in the grant proposal internal review, item B.
So in the first six one one four, you said?
Nope, six one one zero.
Okay, sorry. So again, the, the proposal is aligned with our current practice. If the board wants to approve all grant proposals, that's something we can definitely incorporate. There are some elements of the work that are just delegated to the superintendent.
You're not required to bring everything to us by law.
We're not, no.
See the.
Um some, it it really depends on the grant proposals themselves and the amount of the grant.
All my points.
Okay. The board approves the expenditures on the other side, uh but not necessarily all the proposals. And some proposals come with, like. Um you can submit the grant proposal, but there's, there are, there are a lot of things that you have to do in order to get that money. Um maybe with supplemental programming or something like that, and so it, it could be the case that. You know, we're seeking a grant for three million dollars for something, but. In order to qualify for the three million dollar grant, we have to have one point five million dollars of other programming already in place, and so. That would be an example of the board would need to know that if we say yes to this, then we have to maintain. This other measure.
Well, and there's usually a contract.
Yeah.
You know, and so then that has to be signed, that will be signed by the board.
Yeah. Yeah, grants are not free. Not like free lunch.
Yeah, one more final thing, the item on terms, um when you said that we need to ask other districts. Um I think we need to become a leader in these districts and get ISD, you know?
Oh, I understand.
Always, you know, best practice.
Yeah, the question came to the, came to me, I said, I don't know the answer, I can look at other, I can look at. I can look at what other districts are doing. Um so it wasn't asking anyone's.
No, it was just.
Yeah, yeah.
That we should be leader.
But what is the rationale behind three terms?
The rationale behind three terms is because usually when parents, the reason I came up with three terms when I made the suggestion is. Most parents when their kid comes in in kindergarten, they say, oh, I want to give them all to school. They start in kindergarten, they go all the way to twelfth grade, that's the rationale. Um when you have certain board members that can be on there for a long period of time, sometimes it causes judgment, new fresh ideas bring better judgment sometimes. Not always, but within twelve years of experience, they should be able to pass on that judgment to other board members.
It is the bulk of the time.
Yes.
A child will be at school.
Correct. So if their influence can't be passed on in twelve years, then, you know, that's why I picked twelve years. That was my rationale.
Thank you.
Yep.
So everything is on for action tonight. Uh with the exception of the term uh policy and the ver- the term proposal. And then the emergency removal, suspension and expulsion proposal. Um it's always best, because this is a large body of work. You know, that's why we've spent four months reviewing it, we want to make sure. Because it's tough if you're uh busy, even if we just did it in a month, you know, to have to process this. Much language in a that short of a week out, that would be a difficult thing. I serve on a couple of boards myself and. And it is tough, you get that word packet and it's, depending on the season, it can be really gnawing fast. And so we really try to give you at least a couple of months to process the work. Or process any proposed changes.
So, so for example, the. Then we were one on the turn, so we would still discuss that again with next board meeting.
Yeah.
And then.
Anytime the board was ready, take action and.
And we've got some other followers coming too, so we're like, we, we part of that group. So are we comfortable with this action? Are we aware of that?
All right, I think that's the end of our questions, our presentation for policy, thank you for that. And that brings us to the portion of the meeting where we will entertain public comment. If anyone desires to address the board for three months, the board will be willing to listen, we won't be taking action. But we have, uh we have the Mr. McMillan, so this is us, do we have anybody that has pulled out a uh request to present to the board?
No.
For their hands?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we will then have public comment being closed and we'll move over to. Action items due for us time, and first off, there we go, it's gonna be. The twenty twenty five, twenty six overnight field trip requests. I'm going to call it as presented for one, two and three. For the Michigan Student Council, the twenty twenty five, twenty six athletic opening. And the twenty twenty five National Interior Commerce uh Convention Expo.
So.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shocker?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Justice Lund?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, motion carries. That brings us to our spring summer twenty twenty five, no housing recommendations. And. We have for us. I'm gonna ask the board to call, uh is there a purpose to call them all together or separate? I think energy and either.
Heard it all together.
All right. So for action items for our policy items, number one through twenty one for the new policy. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
Some of them.
Support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shocker?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Justice Lund?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, motion carries. That includes our action items, thank you, and that brings us to board communication and. I don't have any else to do with communications I've received that you have seen. Um Matt has something?
Uh just a reminder that the delegate assembly is coming up next week. And if you have any thoughts or comments, uh leave us a pay for there in handbook and um. Yep. Looking forward to it, so thank you for that.
Thank you for being. Three years old.
Yeah.
All right.
Um I did receive an email from the Kent ISB, they are uh once again sponsoring um. And applications for board members in the county to attend. The NSBA Advocacy Institute Conference, uh it happens annually in Washington, D C. Uh so that conference is in February, if you're interested at all. Um the application is included in uh board book, the uh Kent ISB would. Uh pay the tuition for the conference, the district would pay uh your travel expenses and your accommodations. Um for that experience, you know that uh April is gone. Missed.
Going to, but I didn't.
Go, yeah. Covid year, yeah.
Yeah.
Was that twenty twenty or twenty twenty one?
Twenty twenty one, but was, they, they had it virtual, had to fly out there and then you were virtual.
Yeah.
And so it was like, that's just.
Yeah. Got it.
It was very highly and actually like some areas were um. I've been thinking back a little, but that's okay, you know, it's DC, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um but very highly. It's kind of basic to think that was. Like how much goes in the legislature, just there was like education alone, so yeah, like I would recommend that. That was one of them.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, nothing to communicate.
Okay, so planning, um our next meeting is October twenty seven, we already have more pictures. Group picture, so hopefully we'll make this, what time do you think we might start pictures to do?
Um we're gonna set up. Um probably about, he told me five thirty.
Okay.
But.
But.
He'll do it right up until we start.
He'll do it right up.
Come first term and then just have it, you know. So having no more business before the board, you will stand adjourned at seven twenty six, pressing time, thank you.